You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
The existing commercial property located at 93 Monadnock Highway. The subject property is shown as Tax Map 18, Lot 134, in the Business District. The applicant has withdrawn this application. Public hearing B, ZBA number 23-010, variance application. Barclay Enterprises LLC has requested a variance pursuant to Section 5, Article B1 of the zoning ordinance for the installation and operation of electric vehicle charging stations at the existing commercial property located at 93 Monadnock Highway. The subject property is shown as Tax Map 18, Lot 134, in the Business District. The applicant has withdrawn this application. ZBA number 23-011, special exception application. Barclay Enterprises LLC has requested a special exception pursuant to Section 5, Article B2G of the zoning ordinance for a drive-through facility serving coffee and baked goods at 93 Monadnock Highway. The subject property is shown as Tax Map 18, Lot 134, in the Business District. The applicant has withdrawn this application. ZBA number 23-014, variance application. Graz Engineering LLC has requested a variance pursuant to Section 7, Article E1 of the zoning ordinance to construct a septic system within the 125-foot wetland setback on behalf of Mackenzie Pace for property owned by Sean and Rhonda Beal at 85 Oliver Hill Road. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 21, Lot 11-3, in the Rural Agricultural District. ZBA number 23-015, special exception application. Graz Engineering LLC has requested a special exception pursuant to Section 5, Article B2B of the zoning ordinance on behalf of Jameson Van Dyke for property owned by Robert E. McLean 1993 Trust for an 18-unit multifamily use at 11 Silven Way. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 37, Lot 22, in the Business District. ZBA number 23-016, special exception application. Tyler McLaughlin requests a special exception pursuant to Section 3-AA, Article B of the zoning ordinance on property owned by Don Carlisle to convert an existing accessory structure into a detached accessory dwelling unit at 343 Matthews Road. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 38, Lot 21, in the Commercial Industrial District, followed by other business, a regular meeting schedule amendment, and any other business as may be required.
Thank you very much. We have minutes that have been provided to us from our June 19 meeting. Looks as though the attendants at that meeting that are here are myself, Brian, Anne, James, and Lisa. I'm going to take a motion on those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept those minutes.
Thank you, Anne. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lisa. It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes of June 19, 2023, as presented. Any question on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll jump down to a regional impact vote, knowing that public hearings A, B, and C are not happening this evening because the applicant has withdrawn its application. Does anyone feel that applications D, E, or F would rise to the level of having regional impact?
Mr. Chairman, I move that they do not rise to the level of regional impact.
Do you have a second, Anne O'Callaghan?
I'll second that.
Okay. They've moved and seconded that are Article, uh, items D, E, and F. Agenda for this evening does not rise to the level of regional impact. Any question on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Keith, I'm going to abstain. No conflict on items D and E.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, since we're still waiting for batteries to appear, I have a couple of questions for Sarah.
Okay.
Can you please update us on Flatley, Flatview, and the Route 32, especially the three apartment complexes? Their permits must be coming due, aren't they now?
Um, sort of. So when a ZBA approval takes the next step and receives site plan approval, that kind of cancels out the ZBA process and they start a new timeline. So Plainview, they just received their, uh, site plan approval. They had a compliance hearing, both Flatley and Plainview had a compliance hearing last week, and their site plan approval holds open if there's ZBA approval. The 32 units that are kind of across from the Flatley project, the AlloTech Development, I believe it's called?
That's the one by the proposed fire station.
By the proposed fire station, correct. That one came in, they had to reapply for their site plan approval because they had expired their site plan, but they got the extension for their special exception, and their new expiration date, I believe, is in November of this year. So they have to show active and substantial development by, I think it might be November 10th or December 10th of this year, and/or request an extension of the planning board. But as long as that is active, it holds open their ZBA approval.
Okay. No timeline on Flatley or Flatview, all right?
What do you mean by timeline?
When they have to have shovels in the dirt or their...
Well, their approval didn't become technically complete until their compliance hearings were finished, so their approval is technically complete as of now. So they have 12 months from now to demonstrate active and substantial development, and they also can request a 12-month extension.
Okay. Sarah will accept the vote. Okay. Okay. I'm going to take something which we don't normally do, a little out of order here, apparently according to Sarah. We have a fair amount of interest in what would be our fifth, in our fifth hearing tonight, and that being the special exception, ZBA 23-015, a special exception application. Graz Engineering LLC has requested a special exception pursuant to Section 5, Article B2B of the zoning ordinance on behalf of Jameson Van Dyke for property owned by Robert McQueen 1993 Trust for an 18-unit multifamily use at 11 Silven Way. The property is at Tax Map 37, Lot 22. It's my understanding that information was dropped off as recently at 5:00 this afternoon. You haven't even heard, they have a chance to go over.
Correct.
So what I'd like to do is to, if we could, entertain a motion to move that public hearing to next meeting. Yep, their request is ours. Ours, I think we did well. I don't know what they're thinking, but if we just get information at 5:00, okay. I think it's our call, really.
Yeah.
They haven't requested it, but I think it's, because apparently there's a fair amount of people here and possibly out in the cyber world that are interested in this application, have some interest in this application. Is that basically correct?
Yes.
Any questions? Do you understand what...
So they submitted additional information?
Yes.
At 5:00?
Today.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion that we move it to next scheduled meeting. If there might be questions that department has need to speak to after reviewing that information, I think that would be good.
So that's a motion to move the...
Do they have an opportunity to speak about their question? Or just...
Yeah, we'll just move forward.
I'll make that motion.
Sure. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Before we take a, not to make things even that much more complicated, before we take a vote on a motion, what I'd like to do is to, is to do a site visit prior to our next meeting. We haven't done too many of those, but I think I can picture in my head, I can picture those only, I just can picture 11 Silven Way. If it's, if it's all right with the board, I'd like to open up a public hearing for that one next month on site and then continue it to here.
So we'll have to meet there at 6:00?
Yeah.
So we'd meet at 6:00 for our meeting on the 21st of August?
On this 21st.
Oh, so we're all going to meet there?
That's where this meeting would start.
If you'd like to...
Now, is the public able to attend, so anyone can come to the site?
It is, it is an extension of this meeting, though, so we, we have to be very careful about conversations and...
Right. We won't talk.
We'll just, the biggest thing is...
Parking issue? Where do we park?
11 Silven Way.
We're all in the parking lot, you might have to... I'm going to wait for it.
I don't know. That's why I need a site visit. I can't tell you where to park. I think we'll probably find our way.
So this is technically not open, so we're not actually...
We haven't opened a public hearing.
You are going to?
Um, we have to open a public hearing to entertain this vote.
First, I need to recuse myself. I was going to ask you if you'd open the public hearing.
All right. Before we take any vote on this, we'll open up the public hearing for this, for this...
And that's preferable to just taking it off the docket to next month?
That's true. And then we just extend that public hearing to the site.
Okay.
So I'll open up a public hearing, 23-014, I mean, sorry, and then we're taking this out of order, ZBA 23-015, and I'll entertain a motion to, to...
Keith, before you do it...
Yes.
I'm sorry to confuse you, but I want to make sure you know I recuse myself, so you can see Jay for me.
Oh, thank you. Bill has recused himself as the regular member of the ZBA for this, and I will place James Ward into that, put James Ward into that check position. Okay. So we've opened up a public hearing. I'm proposing that we entertain a motion to close that public hearing to a site visit August 21st.
Continue.
Continue, I'm sorry, continue the public hearing to a site visit on August 21st at 6:00 PM. We'll open up our public hearing there, entertain our sidewalk, and then we'll reconvene, we're going to reconvene here immediately afterwards. Someone take...
So you have a motion on the floor already? Did you need her to redo it?
Yeah, let's do it.
I'd like to make a motion that we move this application to our next meeting, which will be at 6:00, as a site visit with our regular meeting immediately following.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, James. It's been moved and seconded to close this public hearing for the moment and reopen.
Continue.
Continue, continue this public hearing to August 21st onsite at 11 Silven Way. We'll have a site visit there, and then we'll reconvene here for our regular meeting. So if there are folks here that are interested in that, and only interested in that, no reason to stay unless you're very interested to see the rest of what we do, and to see if you two might want to be a member of the board. I have a question. Please, give us your name, please.
You got a motion.
Just give it.
Keith, you got a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. We can't take any until we vote on this motion.
I can't hear a lot of what you're saying.
All right, we're going to try our best, okay? Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to extend this, to continue this public hearing to August 21st. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
If they couldn't hear you, you might...
Do you all understand what we just did?
Yes. Thank you.
So the chairman did a vote because some information from the applicant was submitted at 5:00 tonight, which is not, we don't have time to review it. So we moved the meeting to next month, August 21st. We're going to start it at 6:00 at 11 Silven Way to walk the site, and then we'll come right back here and have the meeting about it. So if you want to stick around to hear the other two cases, more than welcome. If you're here just for that one case, it's been moved.
Is the public allowed to go to the site?
Yes.
Yes. It's an open meeting, it'll be an open meeting at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Just get your name, just, could I have your name, please?
Scott Christa.
What was the last name?
Scott Christa. I live on Silven Way.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so we're not just speak there?
Oh, no, no, we can, we can...
We don't work in our, with the public, answer questions, things like that?
No, but as a board, we can.
As a board, we can talk.
That's right.
All right, so if you're here just for the Silven Way case, it's not being heard. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
We're not going to do that. We're just going to take part in the session. Which is the information that was submitted? Is that what...
You have to ask him. I can't hear what you're saying.
He can't hear you either. Can't hear you.
Was that information left to our project developer? The owner of the property? Or did it go to... I'm not sure if that's a change, because you just got information...
A change was submitted by the engineers?
The change was in the, the engineer that doesn't want to give it to them.
No.
Or you don't want to?
No, 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 no. The engineers submitted new information this evening that the board has not had an opportunity, Tax Map have not had an opportunity.
Don't be unclear, because we have a question with a dossier, a memorandum, that I don't know if you dropped off, I don't know if it's him or the developer. Okay, so now I understand it.
So, yeah, we're just not willing to consider this until we have all the information, which would include that dossier.
Right.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I will say, I think I told you and Bill, the guy, he raised a good point, that the cases that I've heard, either by the selectmen meeting or the planning board meeting, you can't hear.
In this room?
In this room, or downstairs, and even on the recordings, you just can't hear. So we need more microphones and speakers and light this thing up.
Downstairs is better than here.
It's a little better than up here, but not quite much.
But it means we have to speak up.
Right.
Well, what we do is we meet up there.
Well, I didn't know if a stage might be the place actually, literally, to have it, because it projects out probably more naturally from there. All right. We'll move on.
Keith, before you open the public hearing on 014, I'm going to recuse myself due to a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Bill.
And I'm accusing myself, Jay's accusing himself.
All right. Before, before we get into this, we'll seat James for Bill on application number 23-014. ZBA number 23-014, it's a variance application. Graz Engineering LLC has requested a variance pursuant to Section 7, Article E1 of the zoning ordinance to construct a septic system within the 125-foot wetland setback on behalf of Mackenzie Pace for property owned by Sean and Rhonda Beal at 85 Oliver Hill Road. Subject property shown at Tax Map 21, Lot 11-3, in the Rural Ag District. We will seat James for Bill. And, ask Sarah, what we have here from her perspective?
Yeah, I'll give you a brief overview of this because it is a little bit confusing.
Okay.
What's being proposed is a septic system for a new single-family dwelling on a property, well, on a parcel that doesn't exist yet. So currently, 2111-3 is a rear lot with a single-family dwelling, and if you guys look at the plans that are in front of you, there's a strip along Witcombe Road that actually belongs to Eurovia, the gravel pit, and what would need to happen for any additional dwelling to be built on the property is a boundary line adjustment that the planning board would need to approve, and then a minor subdivision that the planning board would need to approve. So I just want to put you in the picture of what you're looking at, because it's a little bit different than what you normally look at.
Okay.
And then this Conservation Commission comments included a request that the plan be looked at, that the wetlands be designated by a wetland scientist, and as of this evening, Graz Engineering did submit a revised plan, which Mr. Jocelyn is passing out now.
Yeah.
The just, the only, the only difference in the plan is there's a stamp from the wetland scientist on it. So they've satisfied the request of the Conservation Commission.
That's it?
Oh, actually, there was one more thing. Sorry, there were lots of little things. The application that was submitted indicated that the wetland setback would be 87 feet to the proposed septic system.
Yep.
In fact, it's 78 feet.
That shown here somewhere?
Um, it, it measures as 78 feet.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not shown.
Okay. Okay. I'll figure out where that is. All right, why don't you jump into it and let us know what you're trying to do?
Test, test, that's good.
Have we opened the public hearing?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant, and then, as I said, we'll seat James for Bill.
My name's Joshua Jocelyn. I'm here with Graz Engineering, representing Mackenzie Pace, who's here, and Sean Beal, who's also here, the property owner. And I've also got Troy Witch with me, who's a coworker, who's done some work on this property. So in the map here that you can see, we're essentially proposing, hard to talk into the mic. Yeah, so we're proposing a septic system that's going to be hugged tight to the property line there, and it's going to be 78 feet from the existing wetlands here. And essentially what happened here is we got hired to do the subdivision, as Sarah was mentioning, that this has to be subdivided and approved through planning to be a building lot, and while we were out there doing the traverse for the subdivision, we noticed this ephemeral stream that runs down through the property. So it's really an ephemeral stream that just flows during, like, high rain events, so it's flowing now, or when the groundwater is high, so during snow melt. And we are side gradient from that stream, so it's 78 feet side gradient from the stream, which is conforming with the state code, which is 75 feet from poorly drained soils, is not conforming with your 125-foot septic setback in the zoning ordinance, and we feel that due to the nature of the site, it, a variance request is reasonable because you can see the way the contours are, the septic's going on a hill, side gradient in the stream, which is also on that hill, and then the effluent from the proposed leach field will flow generally parallel to that stream, so effectively, we feel that the effluent from the septic system is going to be greater than 125 feet before it reenters the wetland location, which is really the, the reason for having that ordinance written, is to protect the nature of the wetlands and get that 125-foot setback. We feel that due to the nature of the site, that it's reasonable to request that variance. So you can see also, this, this zoomed up view up here, the lot overview plan, shows the remaining site, so it's showing where that proposed building and septic system are going to go, and then up on my screen, I have blue highlighted, those are other existing streams that are running through the site. So it's making this area here really the only feasible building area on the site, because the site just gets too narrow down near the road in the spots that are outside the 125-foot buffer, so the only way this lot could be buildable is through a variance for this setback regulation.
Any questions at this point from the board?
I'll observe my questions for later.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments on this, please raise your hand, well, I will acknowledge you, and we just ask you to give us your name, if interested, and you can speak as many times as you want, so you don't have to worry about getting it all in. So if any point, anyone wants to speak in the public, just try to get our attention.
I'll ask a question.
Sure, yeah, please.
So with the recent rains that we've had, have you been out there since the recent rains?
Mackenzie Pace has, yeah.
And so is the, is the water, like, visible?
Yeah, it stays very pretty much where they have it now, but they have a flag right now, so pretty much it's very much in a way out of the black. Yep. There, there is a main channel that runs down through that, the wetlands that are shown on there, a main channel that's probably two feet wide that the stream is, but then if you actually map out the soils around the stream, then that's where you have the hydroxic soil border, so that's what's shown on the plan, is the actual hydroxic soil wetland border.
So it's only wet, it's pretty normal?
That's the only time there's actually water there, yes. The soils are hydroxic, so there's high groundwater there all the time.
Did I not understand, so when I was reading the application, it sounded like, so has the state declared it a wetland, or...
It is a wetland, yes.
It isn't a...
Yes.
You knew that.
Yes, yep.
And it, it's not shown on the map, but it, off to the right of your, of the map here, it connects to a pond, there's a pond there on the, on the site, the overview I saw of the town.
Is it above the property?
It, it's above the property.
The pond?
The pond is above the property, if I remember right. This comes out of the pond and goes down.
I don't know about that area. I know my boss walked 125 feet into those power lines and around that area, and did find other wetlands that were further than 125 feet away, so he...
I just remember seeing it on a Google map or whatever, a pond there. Now, I don't know how, how ephemeral that pond is, I mean, that could be...
Yeah.
The question I have for you is, I, I understand the argument about the, the contours leading down to the left on the diagram there.
Yep.
Sort of parallel with the stream. But what I'm looking at here is that 125-foot wetland setback that is then curls out and around toward the bottom of your thing, your orange line there, and that, of course, is 125 foot from the wetlands above it, right?
Correct.
So anything that comes off the, anything that comes out of that leach field, yes, it goes downhill, but it goes into an area that's inside the 125-foot setback.
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thought there is that the, the 125-foot setback is that the effluent, it's going to be within that buffer zone, the 125-foot setback buffer zone, but it's not going to enter wetlands that are 125 feet away, if that makes any sense.
Well, what you're saying is that because of the contours, it's, it's not headed that way. That's what you're, that's your...
Right, it's not heading, it's not heading towards the wetlands.
That's your argument, yeah.
Other questions?
What would be your proposed leach field system? Appreciate you talking, that's good. Your proposed leach field system and how close a season will I could get?
It's going to be a proposed Presby system and Enviro system. Those systems, you can get two feet above seasonal high groundwater with the pipes, they're one-foot diameter pipes, and the state actually considers those treatment pipes. So rather than it being just an affluent disposal area, it's actually a treatment system.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I just want to be clear, because this diagram's a little bit different than this. The proposed, or the current lot is two separate lots already?
Correct, yes, it's two lots right now.
So is that 11-1 and 11-3?
Yep. Yep, so 11...
So you'd be doing an adjustment of the line?
No, it's 11-3 and 21-13, sorry. So 21-13 has frontage on Witcombe Road, and 11-1 has frontage on Oliver Hill Road. So we're, we're taking the back land from 11-3 and adding it to some of the land from 21-13. So the, the new lot will have frontage on Witcombe Road and be conforming with the areas required. If you look at that lot overview plan near the top of the page, it's showed as kind of a bold outline.
Yeah. So it's coming in, Witcombe, Oliver Hill. Yeah, the, the, this new lot will have frontage on Witcombe.
Yeah.
But this lot has frontage on Oliver Hill, I guess.
I have a question. There appears to be on, on lot eleven-three, Sean and Ron DeBeal, are there a couple of structures on that?
Yep, that's their, their house and their garage.
Okay.
That would become a, a separate lot, though, after the subdivision goes through.
But then we're using the Oliver Hill Road frontage?
No, the frontage that we'll be using for our site is off...
Right.
Yeah, and then they have the frontage on Oliver Hill Road.
That's what I was, I see that now. And they come on the enter off Oliver Hill Road?
Yep, they have a fifty-foot, I believe it's fifty feet wide, a strip of land that runs through.
Pretty long driveway.
Odd little piece of land up there. Yeah. Looks like it was sort of constructed to provide a house back there.
Any other questions? Public or board applicant? Seeing none, hearing none?
Um, I'm, I'm trying to understand, there's a lot of water...
Yeah.
...over that area, I'm trying to understand what might be unique about it, other than the two lots together. Is that, that, that's... Just trying to understand, one of the questions.
Sure. Any more questions at this point about them? I know we've got our work to do.
Um, what last, last question, I guess? The, uh, the power lines that we're talking about?
Yep.
Are these the same power lines that got upgraded recently? Or is this a different?
I don't know.
So they've already been in there and done all their work?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Anything else before we close the public hearing? Close the public hearing? Have any comments, questions, thoughts? Before we move into the questions? None? All right. Questions for a variance? All right, hearing none? Close the public hearing? Have any comments, questions, thoughts? Before we move into the questions? None? All right. Could the variance be granted without being contrary to the public interest? What do you say, Brian?
Uh, from the evidence we have here, I, I would say yes.
Okay. James?
I'm gonna say no, I think the, uh, the one-twenty-five-foot setback is a, is a reasonable one, and I err on the side of caution, in terms of sewage, wetlands.
Clear enough.
I'm a no.
Okay. Lisa?
I would say yes, I don't think it would be contra, contrary to the public interest.
Ann?
Um, I'll say yes, in testimony that I heard, in the questions that Mr. Josselin asked, is that the, uh, the septic system itself is of a higher level, which is regarded by the state as treatment and not just let it go where it wants. That's how I understood it. So if it's designed to that level, then I would say yes.
Okay. Uh, I understand that our, that, that our hundred-and-twenty-five-foot setback is intended to protect the public's interest, uh, we've been through a number of these in the past. I guess I, I'm not seeing a, I'm not seeing a general, um, loss to public interest if this were to be granted, so I'll, although this variance could be granted without being contrary to the public interest. Spirit of the ordinance, would the spirit of the ordinance be observed if the variance were granted? James?
Again, no, for the same reasons.
Lisa?
I agree, no.
Ann?
Um, I'll say no.
Brian?
Well, sure doesn't appear like there's any other place to put it on that law. So I'm gonna say yes.
I always struggle with the spirit of the ordinance, the spirit is so nebulous...
Yeah.
...in all facets.
Yeah, it is.
Um, I'd give, uh, I believe the spirit of ordinance, the spirit of the ordinance would, would not be met if, if indeed this variance were to be granted. Would granting the variance do substantial justice, Lisa?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what Lisa said.
She just said she's on the fence with balance, yeah, mulling it over.
Would reduce substantial justice to the public, I guess.
Yeah, we try to look at it a bit bigger than that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'm sure it would reduce substantial justice to the wetlands.
Yeah. Would you go no here, then?
I would say no.
Ann?
Um, I'll also be a no.
Brian?
Well, it'll do substantial justice to the property owner, 'cause without it, they can't use the property.
Right.
Um, and considering we got the last stamp here on the newest copy they handed out, the state has approved a specific type system for that land, so if the state's good with it...
I don't think that's what they did.
Yeah, that's a wetland scientist.
What they did is they certified this as a wetland.
Oh, I thought it was for the septic.
No. No, they certified this as a wetland because it was not clear that it was a real wetland.
The, the state setback is seventy-five feet, so they would approve this plan, though.
They, the state would have approved this plan.
Yeah.
It's just outside the seventy-five.
Yep.
So I think we're at...
Yeah, I think I...
I think we're at you, right?
Yeah, we're at me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna say, uh, yes.
James?
Um, substantial justice to the property owner, not necessarily substantial justice to the town, so, um, I guess I have to pick, so I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, I think I have a hard time seeing the system for justice of this one, given the, given what we've, what we've approved in the past, so I'll be a no. Could the variance be granted without dimin, without diminishing surrounding property values? Ann?
I'm sorry, you're asking me?
Yes, Ann, could the variance be granted without diminishing surrounding property values?
I don't know if the state has approved.
Well, this is our variance, could our variance be granted without diminishing surrounding property values?
Yeah, I guess, I guess it could be, in the right conditions.
So...
I guess I'll be a yes.
You say, it, it could be granted without diminishing surrounding property values?
It could be.
Okay. Brian?
Yes, no evidence to the contrary thus far.
It's usually what we go on, James?
I agree, would not diminish the values of surrounding properties.
Lisa?
Also a yes.
Okay. Um, we have no evidence to that, in fact, in front of us to take up, so I think, given what we have in front of us, the variance could be granted without diminishing surrounding property values. Do special conditions of the property exist that distinguish it from other properties in the area? Brian?
Well, it certainly does, I actually had to look it up on my phone, 'cause I was having trouble placing this particular lot.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, all these lots up in there are pretty unique, but yeah, this here is certainly unique with that water table going through the land, and it decreases the usable amount of land that they potentially could have, so, yes.
Lots of frontage, but not much buildable area.
Right.
All right, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure I understand what we're talking about here, 'cause it's part I and I-I, so it's not just whether there's special conditions or not, it's whether there's a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision.
But that's a different question. That would be our next question.
Okay, so...
First, we, first to try to determine whether or not special conditions of the property...
You should be on hardship.
Oh, hardship, yeah.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Oh, we're not there, okay, yep, yep.
Yeah, we're just on question five.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. We're question five, yeah.
All right, thank you, uh, I don't have this on my checklist.
Yeah, I don't mind a match, I never notice that, so...
Okay, so, sorry.
Question five.
Question five, thank you. Um, I don't have it in the form of a question.
Little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship?
No, that's the one.
No?
We are, we have to agree that the...
We have to do that this, does have special conditions of the property first.
Okay, okay.
So we're on question five, right there.
Oh, you know what it is?
I was looking at their responses, right?
Okay.
Yep, 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 got it.
We are, this was still in the right order.
Got me, got me all confused, now you're straightening me out.
We caught something I would've tripped up on anyway.
He was all excited, he went to the next question.
So, do special conditions of the property exist that distinguish it from other properties in the area? Brian?
Yes, my answer's still yes.
Okay, James?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Myself, I agree. Okay, now, due to the...
You should just go off the internet, it's gonna be too few.
But I don't even have the hardship question. It's, it's up above this, I don't have the word. Um, okay, do we, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to wing this one.
Owing to the special condition?
Here. Yeah, do you have the question?
Yeah.
Okay, owing to the special conditions of the property that we just, that distinguish it from other properties in the area, that we just determined this isn't hardship. Same thing, you have the same thing I have.
The hardship is, is A-two, A-I-I.
Well, that yes and no, that yes and no is for question five.
Right, and then this is, if these are not...
Yeah, but we still have to go to A-one.
Then we get to hardship.
If it only if.
Yeah, but we still have to do A-one.
I know, I know. I'm trying to explain to him.
We're gonna figure this out, guys.
I think, I think we, uh, we're trying to determine hardship by answering all these questions, because it does, it says, if the criteria in sub-paragraph A-I and A-I-I are not met, unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if, part B.
So that yes and no at the top, it goes with question five?
Yes. The yes and no went with question five, and the yes agree and...
Because actually, we have been on this form, and it's always been on this form. Because this is what you guys work off of always, and this is what the application actually is, and Jay saw the difference of the two pieces of paper.
Right.
And we've never noticed that before this moment.
So, the applicant was asked to comment on whether it's a hardship or not, but we determine whether there's a hardship or not by answering questions A-I and A-I-I, and B, if we need to.
I think that makes sense. He's on this.
If you read down to right here, it says, um, if the criteria up here are, are not met, then we'd say there's a hardship...
And you go to here, though.
Then we go to here, if these are not met.
But, but that's the...
After whether there's a special condition.
Yeah, well, we've already voted on that.
Yes.
There should be another question.
So here's the question, owing to the special condition.
Still doesn't speak to hardship.
Well, if this and this are not met, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if B exists.
All right. Okay, so we've determined that there are special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in this area. Now, owing to those special conditions of the property, I believe, that distinguish it from other properties in the area, do we agree that there's not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific applic- And the specific application of the provision to the property? So owing to the special conditions of the property that we just established, that distinguish it from other properties in the area, do we agree that there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of the provision to the property? Hang on a second. And we're gonna go to you, James.
Okay, now I'm interpreting this to mean, you can help me with this.
Sure.
The general public purpose of the ordinance is to protect the wetlands, and the specific application of that provision to the property is that we would, that we would deny the, the application of the provision to this property means that there, that this would not allow this development. So, and I, I, at first I wanted to say no, but I guess I...
Do you agree that there is not a fair and substantial relationship?
Oh, oh, it's not, oh, no, no, there is, so I would say no, I would say no to that statement. There is a fair and substantial relationship for the ordinance and the specific application of the provision to the property because the, the ordinance applies to this application of the, wow, wait a second.
The way I, I'm gonna step in and...
Yes, please help me.
We're deliberating here.
Is the, the property has unique, is, is unique in and of itself.
Right.
So we know what, we know what the purpose of the ordinance is, but this piece of property is unique. So for me, that, that means that, that because this property is unique, there is, because it is distinguished from other property areas, that, that the general public purpose is, because this property is so unique that for me, that means that it would be a yes, that's, that's the way I'm reading it.
Yeah.
Because, because the property is unique. Tell me what you think.
Well, I'm looking at this, the fair and substantial relationship, I'm looking for a relation, first of all, I'm gonna say the relationship between the ordinance, just cutting out some of the other words, the relationship between the ordinance and the specific application of the provision. What does provision mean?
Provision is to interpret or provide because it is unique.
The provision is the variance, the provision is the variance?
Well, the provision would be the purpose of the application and what they intend to use the property for. So is there, is there a relationship between the ordinance and is it fair between the ordinance and their intended purpose because of...
Right.
The specific design of the property.
And if I say yes, then I say there's not a relationship between them, so I would say, I would say no, I would disagree with that statement.
I'm, I'm, I'm seeing it the opposite way, I just can't...
Right, so what he's saying is there is a fair relationship between the ordinance and what the taxpayers want and what they're trying to do with the property.
They're related, they don't necessarily agree, but they're related. Basically, I think I'm saying that the, that the ordinance applies. By saying no here, I'm saying...
The ordinance applies to all properties.
Well, it's a double negative because they're saying there is not a relationship, and he's saying no, that there is a relationship.
Right.
Between the application and the ordinance. The ordinance says a hundred and twenty-five feet.
The application, in the spirit of ordinance, the application of the ordinance is different for this property because it's unique.
That's what we're, that's what we need to determine.
And so I, I, basically, I think, I think what this is asking is does our ordinance under these special conditions apply to what's being asked to be done here?
Our ordinance would apply to all properties, all properties, and determine whether this one's unique.
Right, and so I'm saying the special conditions are, there are special conditions in this property, but I'm saying they, they do not, they do not distinguish it enough so the ordinance wouldn't apply. That's what I'm saying.
So your answer's no?
No. My answer's no.
Okay.
I think that's my interpretation.
I like, well, you answered it, you answered it well.
Lisa?
I'm gonna go with no, also.
Okay, Ann?
I mean, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I'll vote yes on this one as well. Ann, is the proposed use a reasonable one? Lisa?
Yes, I believe it is reasonable.
Brian?
Who?
Brian?
Uh, yes. Who?
Do we, is the, and do you believe that the proposed use is a reasonable one?
Yeah.
Okay. Brian?
Brian, I already went.
Brian, I'm sorry, Ann?
Yes.
Okay, Ann?
You've gotta get Jay.
So, yes.
I agree, yes, this is a reasonable use.
Okay, and I'll, I'll concur. It appears as though, you can correct me here, that the criteria in sub-paragraph, sub-paragraph A I and A two are not, because we have no votes.
I think they are, are met because of the majority of yes votes.
There are a majority of yes votes in both A I and A two.
Okay, so the criteria are met.
But what was the first five, were the majorities in the first five, because they all have to pass?
The first five, they were not majorities, no, but in the A I and A two.
Yeah.
So we're saying they, they are, they are met, so we don't have to go to B?
Right.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Alright. Okay. We've been through the questions. I'll entertain a motion on the, on this particular variance application.
Do you wanna go back through the, which questions failed?
Great, okay, well, yes, just sort of recap. On the, could the variance be granted without public interest, it was four yeses and one no, so it didn't carry unanimously. Number two, there were one yes and four no's as to whether the spirit of the ordinance would be observed if the variance were granted. And number three, we've had, could, would granting the variance do substantial, substantial justice, we had one yes, four no's. Variance, could the variance be granted without diminishing surrounding property values, everyone was in agreement that yes, it could. Due to the special conditions of the property that exist, do special conditions of the property exist that distinct, distinguish it from other properties in the area, we all voted in the affirmative that there are special conditions, and then A I, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the property area, there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific applications of the property, we had two no's and three yeses, and we all agreed that the proposed use is a reasonable one.
So two and three were no?
Two and three were no.
Three and three had no, uh, one had a no.
Well, two and three...
Majority, yeah.
Yep.
So I make a motion that we deny the application because it's the bottom of the page, it says if the application fails, any one of the five variance requirements that has failed two in this case, it cannot be legally granted and should be denied. In that case, I make a motion that we deny this application.
Can I second?
Thank you, James, been moved and seconded to deny the application for variance in this case. All those are figures, we're gonna take it so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
That's Ann?
Yeah, Ann. Okay. Thank you. Alright. Item F on our agenda. I'm sorry. Six F. D V A's number twenty-three dash O one six, this is a special exception application. Tyler McLaughlin requests a special exception pursuant to section three A A, article B of the zoning ordinance on a property owned by Darian Carwell, to convert an existing accessory structure into a detached accessory dwelling unit at three forty-three Matthews Road. Public, the subject property shown attached map thirty-eight lot twenty-one in the commercial industrial district. Seated for this will be myself, Brian, Ann, Lisa, and we'll, we'll seat James for... Bill? And someone can tell us what we're trying to do. Did you step on up to the microphone if you'd like? That's okay.
So we wanna put an apartment in the, or do we need to touch this, or can you hear me? I'm on.
I'm on, okay, cool.
We wanna put an apartment in, in the garage.
In the garage?
For mom. The structure's already there and, uh, utilities are on site, nothing new, no change of footprint, just alterations of the interior.
This is your momma, her mom. Are you sure?
Mm-hmm.
So there won't be any garage anymore?
The appearance won't change, the, the doors are going to remain there, and as far as the, the space that the door occupies, we'll utilize that for snow blower, lawnmower, whatnot, things, things of that nature.
Here somewhere that, what's the square footage of the, roughly of the, the new, the unit, the...
I'm sorry, I came unprepared for that, I did provide a diagram.
Three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
My, my question, is there a regulation as to how big the, is there a minimum size?
The minimum size applies to multi-family.
Multi-family, okay.
Yeah. This is a public hearing, if any members of the public are here that would like to comment, please just give my attention. Sarah, can you tee us up on this?
Um, they have public water, public sewer, the property's a little bit over an acre, they're in the commercial industrial district, um, which runs fifteen hundred feet from center line to Route ten, so they're sort of a unique property because they are residential in nature and surrounded by other residential uses. I believe there are some D A D U's also in the same zone as them, very nearby.
So why are they in front of us?
Because D A D U's are not permitted without a special exception.
I see, thank you.
If it were an attached accessory dwelling unit, they would not be...
They wouldn't be here, okay.
Didn't it just have one reason anywhere we, they threw their application, they weren't gonna change the exterior?
That was all internal, right?
That was all internal?
Yeah, so this is detached, there's a space between the garage and the house, but it's the other one, they were putting a wall up inside the house.
I gotcha, okay.
So in essence, your parking will be basically what's in, in front of these units? Um, you know, you're not gonna...
Yes, there's currently space for six vehicles, and we don't utilize all of them.
You, you don't think you're gonna have to find yourself backing on to the highway, you're gonna be able to turn around in there, or do you...
There's adequate room to turn around, yeah.
Any other questions on the board?
Sarah, are detached accessory units allowed under special exception in all districts?
In all districts that permit residential, and so we considered this, since there's pre-existing residential on the property.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't feel it even felt as an expansion of that use, although it could fall as an expansion of that use with an additional special exception, but because D A D U's are allowed in all districts that permit residential, we felt one special exception was reasonable.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was looking for language about detached units in the commercial district and commercial industrial district.
Yeah, you won't find it.
But I do see that home occupation is allowed in, and so this is basically what that is.
Well, it's not really a home occupation, um, but if you look in the accessory dwelling unit ordinance...
Yes, right, that's where...
It does say that they're permitted in all...
Units, places where residential, I understand the reasoning and I accept that.
I see. Is that something we might wanna be aware of? Ann, what was it, what were you clarifying?
Oh, I was, I was going to say, yeah, that's what I was.
I'm trying to decide how much you're up on.
I was, so this is the Matthews, on this page where it has this graph, see, flip it over, that's Matthews Road, so his, this is where, this is, they're gonna build it out here, and that's what, I was confused because I was looking at the wrong side.
Oh, I see.
So this side's the Matthews Road.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
I'm curious what that little racetrack is behind this property. Is that what it is, dirt bike track?
Is that what that is?
I don't know, it's my mistake.
Well, I think it's...
Huh, that's where she races?
Yeah.
I think that gives some access to the rail trail back there.
Oh, is that what it is?
Riley Conservation. Emma Ledger removed a bunch of sand there to raise the cornfield over by Walmart, by the car dealership to make that not wetland, but to add to a wetland, you gotta take away from the same wetland, and that's what they did to satisfy that request, you know? So, uh, yeah, that's what's happening behind there.
Over that story. Alright, anything else before we move to the questions? I believe, uh, okay. Okay. Do we agree that the proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in your district and is in, and is in appropriate location for such a use? Brian?
Based on the testimony from our town planner that there were other A D U's or D A D U's in the area, I'd say yes.
Okay, James?
Yes, um, I, with that clarification that because there's already residential in this district.
It's a primary use, okay. Lisa?
Yes, I agree.
Ann?
Yes.
Well, I, I concur. Do we, do we agree that such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? James?
Yes, I do, they would not produce the value of any property.
Lisa?
I agree.
Ann?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah, there's no evidence to the contrary, yes.
Okay, I, I concur. Do we concur that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians as a result of this approval? Lisa? Do we agree there will be, do you agree there will be no need nuisance?
I agree there will be no nuisance.
Should we approve this? Ann?
Yes.
Brian?
I don't know, for my mother moving in, there'd be a nuisance.
That's a, that's a different topic.
Sure. But I'd be drinking, so...
That's a yes?
I'm gonna say yes.
James?
We have no evidence that there'd be any nuisance or serious hazard.
I haven't seen any myself. Okay. Do we agree that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operations of the proposed use? Anne?
Yes, I recommend for the best term, thinking about taking the place and.
That's a yes, Anne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
James?
Yes, I think these are perfectly adequate and appropriate facilities.
Lisa?
Yes.
And I concur. So, given that we agreed in the affirmative for all of the questions, let's hear the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this application for a special exception for.
Thank you, Eric.
Detached accessory dwelling unit.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Lisa's come in the second and to approve this special, this special exception app, special exception application for a detached accessory dwelling unit. All those in, any questions on the motion? Here and now, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Save the easiest one for last. We got to it, thank you very much.
So what's next?
You'll, um.
Your mother's gonna build this, right?
You'll receive a letter indicating your approval, and then you'll need to talk with Mike Jesson about getting the building permit.
Okay. All right, folks. Thank you very much. Okay. Regular meeting schedule amendment?
Yes.
What do we got?
Do we open it up for public comment?
I mean, sure, so, you guys can amend your meeting schedule, your meeting times and such, by changing your rules of procedure, as was discussed last meeting and the one prior. So, last meeting, you guys agreed to change your meeting time to be 6:30 on the third Monday of the month, with the exception of the first two Mondays of the year, when you meet on the second. And so, the last page of your packet shows the change in language that would be incorporated into the rules of procedure. And you can approve this or not at this time, because it was noticed two weeks ago, at both post offices, town hall, and on the website.
I'm good that we adopt him, but not for the August meeting, because we already set a walk-around at 6:00. So for the September meeting?
A motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
Question on the motion? If you're starting meetings in September, starting September at 6:30?
That's, we can do that, right?
She'll be gone, she doesn't care.
I care.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any other business?
One more thing, we brought it up earlier, I'd like to comment it on the record, that we consider doing something about the sound, if it's in this room or downstairs, is irrelevant, more microphones and, and, I mean, two for table like this doesn't work, and when I listen to the planning board, the select board, you just, online, you can't hear.
Is it, would it be helpful if we made it straight, face the audience, kind of traditional?
I think it would be helpful if you have nine people, you have nine microphones, like Keen has, and if people are gonna dialogue, they come to a podium where there's a microphone and more than one little speaker, we need, like, an audio system, something that can be done, and that's just an opinion.
Yeah.
But if I, you know, I've got hearing aids, it's hard for me to hear in the first place, so, you know, a lot of the dialogue going over there, I still can't hear. So if I'm like that, the elderly people that don't come, and they're listening to it online, there's no way they're picking it up.
Okay. So, we're using these more microphones to start with?
And more speakers.
Speakers.
Yeah.
So, so if I may.
Sure.
I think we have a plan, if we're gonna work that safely out, we do want a structure of the L shape, primarily so that you have a place for a podium up there, we did try it long-handed, didn't see it work out that way. As you know, there's not a lot we can do in here, Earth Reserve, so, and it's obviously there is, it's a budget one, also, by the design of the building. So, yeah, we have some ideas, we're gonna try to make it more mechanical in a lot of ways, because that, well, reduces the attitude of batteries and whatnot, but, yeah, we're working on it, and let you guys know as we go, and what you're getting, because it's also falls a lot on you guys, and the operator of those mics, you know, if it isn't the battery operator ones, we make sure we compress it, we're closer to the mic. It's one thing for residents, you know, because they'll use it only once every month they might come in, versus you guys, and they're using it more consistently, so, that's all that we have, we're working on it, you know, we do, you know, where they're, and it's obviously, we're trying to work on it, so.
Yes, really, more, more mics and more speakers.
Is there any way to get some speakers, maybe Bluetooth or something at the back, coming forward, so, yeah, so, i- the audience sitting in the rear can hear better that way?
And the other thing I would ask that you pass on to the selectmen and the planning board, and, and us in the zoning as well, right? That I notice when I watch online, sometimes people are dialoguing together and they're trying to be quiet, but when it's a public meeting, you're not allowed to. If you're not talking in a microphone, shut your mouth. Because the people wanna hear what's going on, and you can't, you just can't hear it.
It's more etiquette, essentially.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
All right, anything else?
Congratulations, and, and we're sorry to see you go.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
When, when are you leaving?
August 4th. This will be my last meeting with you folks. I don't believe I was supposed to get that.
Okay. If there's not, if there's no other business to come before us, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you, Brian, you have a second?
Second.
Second to adjourn. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed?